The public portion will be immediately following this part of the meeting. We have meeting minutes from July 20th. We have ordinances on second reading, oh, we have 071101, which is adjourned indefinitely. This has to do with sidewalk construction repair and maintenance.
Replace one another.
We have oh, there's 071103, an ordinance to amend and supplement. Revised general ordinance to the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, traffic and parking. Add and delete handicap parking zones. Delete one residential handicap parking zone at 33 Bergen Court and one at 21 Bergen Court. Add one at 21 Bergen Court. We have oh, there's 071104, which was, we had amended by resolution oh, there's 071104-1. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance to the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, dot 16, dot 020, no parking any time. Eliminate Plum Street between French and Somerset and add Plum Street. This is being amended because one of those things was left out of the last meeting. I was accomplishing what I set out to do in this first instance. Oh, there's 071105, this goes back to the ordinance earlier that was tabled. It's an ordinance supplement, revised general ordinance to the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, dot 12, Traffic Control Regulations. Sorry, it's not actually. Mid-block crosswalks should pass, which would sum up F2.
That's what we did. We did not introduce that ordinance until the last meeting, so we have it on first read tonight.
So this should not be here?
Well, that's right, that's right, so see, after the 9th of February.
Oh, there's 071106, bond ordinance providing for the 2011 General Capital Improvement Program, by and in the city of New Brunswick, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey appropriating $1,925,617, therefore, an authorizing of debt in the amount of $1,833,000 requiring a down payment of $92,617. Oh, there's 071107, a bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the water system by and in the city of New Brunswick, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey appropriating $410,000, therefore, an authorization of $410,000 in bonds or notes and financing costs thereof. Oh, there's 071108, a bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the sewer system by and in the city of New Brunswick, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey appropriating $425,000, therefore, and a 40,000 issuance of $425,000 bonds and notes and financing costs thereof. Oh, there's 071109, as amended, revised by R-0, there's 071109-1, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance to the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 7, Section 40, solid waste collection and disposal. Ordances on first read. Oh, there's 081101, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance to the city of New Brunswick, 2064, payment of extra duty assignments. This is for extra duty police. Oh, there's 081102, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance to the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, traffic and parking. And we've gotten now to mid-block crosswalk and industrial drive. Is there anything?
I'm confused too about the Patterson Street, but I'm assured by Mr. Gould that this is what he's looking for, the industrial drive.
And not Patterson?
And not Patterson, no problem.
Oh, there's 081103, an ordinance to amend, revised general ordinance to the city of New Brunswick, Chapter, which I can't read on here, sidewalk construction repair and maintenance, which is replacing.
Should be 12, 03.
Okay. It's replacing the one that was being held for adjournment. We have resolutions, R-081101, approve agenda amendments there. 02, approve payroll for the period of 7/9 through 7/22. 03, seeing cold that request of the city clerk is unnecessary. 04, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. 05, authorize tax collect for the transfer over payments on several tax order and store accounts. 06, approve amendment, resolution R-031127, reason additional $554.50 for services rendered for Golden, Rothschilds, Knoblauch, Lundell, Levitt, and Boylan for Thomas Bonnady versus City of New Brunswick attorney fees from $4,209.24 to $4,763.74. 07, approve request for use of city property, location Feaster Park, requested by Gabriel Flores for the men's basketball league, food, and music, Sundays, August 7th through September 25th, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I recall we had gotten a letter from the mayor regarding music at Feaster Park, and I wanted to make sure.
Because the city will exclude the music, Mr. President.
Okay, good. 08, approve request for use of city property, location Langley Park, Lincoln Gardens Block Association, Back to School Barbecue, they have requested an insurance waiver, which is written at, written without the waivers. Although there may be another way, I've been informed that you could work it out.
It was brought to my attention tonight that maybe Robert Wood Johnson would be willing to cover the insurance requirement. I was wondering if someone was here who might be able to speak to that.
Is anybody here with the Lincoln Gardens Block Association?
Yeah.
Maybe, Adam, please? Are you fine?
I haven't heard anything from Robert Wood Johnson that they were covering the insurance. We're just raising money from members of the Lincoln Gardens Club and local businesses. And last year, at the last, I guess, a couple of days before the event, I got a call that we had to get insurance and scramble our money to get it, and they took away from food supply and food and stuff for the used activities for the kids. So I thought I would write you a letter to see if it was possible to waive. I know when I was with the National Food Leavers, the insurance was to be waived for that. And quite frankly, we don't have the money. Intervent Paxton Corporation, that was our largest sponsor, and then shut down a couple of months ago. So if it could be waived, that would be great. If not, they have to skip the place or something.
We have not ever gotten a waiver before on this, but I did hear tonight.
If I may, you may want to ask Josenia, talk to Josenia Hernandez, I know she's working with you.
Yeah, right.
Talk to her, because there might be a way that, since she's sponsoring the program with you, that they might be able to help you with that, with the insurance part, as part of the program.
Okay, I'll speak to her, she has a mission to do.
I spoke to her today.
Okay, okay.
Yes. So just explore the possibility, because there might be a chance.
Okay.
And it would probably be, from what I understand, a little cheaper for them, too. Put it on theirs.
Okay, I'll talk to her.
Okay, thank you.
So everyone understands that the resolution is requiring insurance?
Correct. 09, approve request for street closing, ERCP, Center for Health and Information Fair, celebrating National Health Center Week. Street closure will be March Street between George and Nielsen, Friday, August 12th, from 8:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. 10, approve request for use of city property, location Baker Park, requested by Amart and V Summer Camp Program, Pratt, Rupert Center for Latino Arts, Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital, Mini Olympics for summer campers, Tuesday, August 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. 11, approve resolution to authorize rebid for emergency housing shelter. 12, approve award of contract with only retreads, repairing and retreading truck tires, Public Works not to exceed $23,916. 13, approve amendment of resolution R-050924, the reason is an increase of $123.10, with New World Systems for their CAT upgrade increases under 20% of the original contract. 14, approve award of contract with Maverick Building Services for cleaning lots, not to exceed, I think, I don't have the numbers.
12,500.
All right, 12,500. Just so you know, my copy is. 15, approve amendment, resolution R-090906, establish scheduled payment by applicants, scheduled payment to the city engineer pursuant to municipal land use law. 16, approve amendment of resolution R-061165, the reason, a project has been split into two projects, authorize advertisement and receipt of bids for the Rentson Avenue store sort improvement, and when we get to 23, you'll see the second part of this. 17, approve change order number one to MNC General Contracting for Nielsen Street roadway sidewalk repair project, requested by the engineering department from $29,940 to $38,865, and the increase is over 20% of the original contract. 18, approve request to discharge treated groundwater requested by Mac Tech in behalf of Rhodia, this is ongoing cleanup, which is going off quick some time. 19, approve award of contract with Logomania, printing and binding of various forms from municipal court, $20,732.20. 10, authorize execution of certification municipal right of way, the New Brunswick Bike Way project. 21, approve raffle license for earth share of New Jersey. 22, authorize release of escrow to Central Jersey Oncology Center, a map, $1,997.17. 23, approve amendment of resolution R-061165, the reason, the project is being split into two projects, authorize advertisement and receipt of bids, sanitation sort improvement for Drift Street and abundant bike church, and this is the other one that was split from the original that was covered earlier. 24, being held at the request of the city administrator. 25, approve refund policy for certain permits. 26, authorize refund to Kenroy Johnson for permit fee of $100, he applied improperly your product, the property is not located in New Brunswick. 27, approve amendment of resolution R-071145, reason an additional amount of $3,000 to repair roads due to water main breaks, to Stavola Asphalt Company for bituminous materials, the increase is over 20% for that, okay, additional. We know what this went to?
What?
It was increased by 3,000, is how it probably.
That's the, the 3,000 is to the water utilities part of this contract. We go out the bid and then Public Works and the Water Utility share the contract. It's the Water Utility that required the extra money to get through 2010, or 2011, excuse me, to make some of the repairs that are necessary.
28, approve budget insertion, Chapter 159, New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund for the Stamp Street Project, the amount is $278,374. 29, approve budget insertion, Chapter 159, Middlesex County Department of Senior Services for Congregate Meal Services, the amount is $10,000. 30, approve budget insertion, Chapter 159, Ed Woodburn Memorial Justice Grant Program for the Police JAG Program, the amount is $250,000. 31, food budget insertion, Chapter 159, State of New Jersey Department of Agriculture for the Summer Food Service Program, the amount is $201,330.30. 32, cold that request that tax collector is unnecessary. 33, approve amendment of resolution R-050975, final payment of $41,319.95 with Elson Killiam Associates doing business as Hatchmont McDonald for the Water Treatment Plan Improvement Project. 34, approve request for relaxation of noise ordinance requested by train for crane placement at 55 Commercial Avenue, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., August 6th, 2011. Alternate date would be August 13th and August 20th, both Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. 35, approve change order number five for delaying contract with College Avenue Wastewater Pumping Station replacement, the amount not to exceed.
Three?
Three thousand dollars. Six thousand, sorry. The increase is not 20, over 100%. Is that in on the resolutions?
Yes, it does.
So we don't have any ideas on the discussion, so. Meeting's going to come to order now. We asked everybody, please turn off or change their phones to vibrate. Clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Cook is absent. Councilmember Egan?
Here.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Here.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Present.
Council President Racine?
Here. Please be advised that the motion requirements is open to public meeting after being filed with satisfaction and hand on notice, exchange sufficient notice at the time and place of the conduct of our public meetings in municipal council, filed with the city clerk, placed on a probate board, and lobbyist city hall, and has been chartered to the official newspaper, namely, The Home Live Tribune. Pleasure, ladies, please.
I'm pleasure, ladies, to reply, in the United States of America, and to the beloved for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence, honor those who have given their lives over in the Middle East, Iraq, and Afghanistan. Say, "Thank you." We have minutes from July 20th.
Make the motion in seven minutes.
Seven.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye.
Ordinance O-071101 has been adjourned indefinitely and replaced.
No, it should be a motion to adjourn that day.
Okay.
Motion, so who?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye.
Oh, there's 071103, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance to the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, traffic and parking, add and delete handicap parking zones, delete one residential handicap parking zone at 33 Bergen Court, add one residential handicap parking zone at 21 Bergen Court. Is anyone from the public who's to comment on this ordinance?
Motion?
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye.
Oh, there's 071104, as revised by R-0, there's 071104-1, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance to the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, dot 16, dot 020, no parking any time, eliminate Plum Street between French and Somerset and add Plum Street. Anyone from the public who's to comment on the motion on this resolution? Okay.
Second.
Second.
Roll call. On the resolution.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye.
Is anyone from the public who's to comment on this ordinance?
Move the ordinance?
I think it was sufficiently something to have been voted carried and republished, because there's some, some people have left that in the earlier one, even though we're trying to accomplish the same thing, it isn't worded that way, so.
All right, so then on the motion to carry it to the meeting.
Seventeen and seventeen.
So who votes it?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Racine?
Aye.
Should this item be here?
This should be.
So why don't we do anything?
No, sir.
So 05 is being skipped. Oh, there's 071106, a bond ordinance providing for the 2011 General Capital Improvement Program, by and in the city of New Brunswick, the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey appropriating $1,925,617, therefore, an authorizing of debt in the amount of $1,833,000 requiring a down payment of $92,617. Anyone from the public who's to comment on this ordinance?
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Racine?
Aye.
Oh, there's 071107, a bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the water system by and in the city of New Brunswick, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey appropriating $410,000, therefore, an authorizing issuance of $410,000 bonds or notes to finance the costs thereof. Anyone from the public who's to comment on this ordinance?
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Racine?
Aye.
Oh, there's 071108, a bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the sewer system by and in the city of New Brunswick, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey appropriating $425,000, therefore, authorizing issuance of $425,000 bonds and notes to finance the costs thereof. Anyone from the public who's to comment on this ordinance?
Second.
Second. First. Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Racine?
Aye.
And now, we have the one that's to ensure the majority of people here tonight for it. Before I do this, read this ordinance and do the hearing, a couple of things. First of all, we're going to have a PowerPoint presentation. I will take questions in an orderly manner. If you want to speak, please raise your hand, it'll be recognized and you can speak. I would ask you to be respectful of other people speaking, not to interrupt and not to yell out. Everybody will get a chance to speak at least once. If someone has spoken already, I'm going to call on people that have not spoken first. Please keep that in mind. So I'll read it and then we'll do the PowerPoint presentation. Oh, there's 071109, as amended by R-0, there's 071109-1, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance to the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 7, Section 40, solid waste collection and disposal.
The resolution on the amendments, probably you put first, but I, if you had a lot of common.
Correct. So I'm going to go to the PowerPoint presentation at this time. Does anybody see that?
No.
They're too bright.
I understand who's. I want to move over, man. My seat's over.
Is there a seat up there?
Yes.
Thank you, Council President. My name is Flynn Patterson, I'm the Director of Planning Development of the City. This is a very short PowerPoint presentation to give a summary of what the issues are with bulk pickup and what the proposed changes are. Current rules for trash and bulk pickup are that you can put out three containers of regular trash on your regularly scheduled garbage day. You can call for three extra containers to be put out for a total of six, this is per unit, if you call DPW first with those extra trash cans. And if you're doing bulk items such as sofas, mattresses, and so forth, you can put out three bulk items, but you have to call DPW first to let them know that those items will be, be out there. The problems with the current rule are that people often don't call and put the bulk items out in any case. Other times, people will call and say they're putting out three, they hear what the limit is, they're putting out three items, and they often put out four, five, six, seven, or whatever it is. The bulk items are put out days before the regularly scheduled pickup day, and that if the improperly placed bulk is not picked up, remains out on the street for several days and is a hazard and an eyesore for the neighborhood. This illustrates some of the problems that are caused by the large, voluminous amount of bulk garbage that is put out in the middle to May to middle of June period. As you see from these photos, sidewalks are often blocked, so if a mother is pushing a baby carriage, maybe has a toddler walking with her, they're often forced to walk out into the street to get past, or have to, possibly have the danger of bumping into some of the trash, oftentimes which is broken, made of sharp edges and so forth, and which can be Bulk items often flow out into the street, sometimes just placed out in the street, other times just because of the volume of them, they go out and block the parking areas in the street so that the parking in these areas is not available for residents. And then particularly, on some dates out there, there are not enough trucks to pick up all the trash and all the bulk items that are put out on the street. DPW is constrained by the fact that the Middlesex County Dump Down in New Brunswick closes at, at 3 o'clock, so they can't pick up items much after 2 o'clock in the afternoon. This leads to the problem that trash in other neighborhoods is sometimes not collected, even when it's put out on its property later day, it doesn't get picked up on that day and has to wait till the next day, or sometimes even the day after that. This is an example of one of the intersections at Gildan and Cortland. This year, these two properties are across the street from, from each other, and it's a little hard to see because the photo's a little dark, but in the top photo, there were about 11 or 12 rugs that are rolled up and put out there, some mattresses, I think it was an easy chair, some doors or tabletops that also seem to be in the pile out there, along with all the regular garbage. Across the street from that, there's another pile of garbage and bulk items, including an overturned sofa, a couple of overturned tables that are out the street, four or five mattresses and various other items out there. And it's this kind of voluminous bulk items and trash out there, it takes the DPW truck a long time to pick up these things, and if it happens to be on a narrow street, for example, Lewis Street, where cars are parked on both sides, the truck might be on one block for, you know, 20 minutes or 30 minutes, and cars backed up behind the garbage truck can't get around, causing traffic delays in the city. During this time, from mid-May to mid-June, the average solid waste tonnage increases to about, by about 22% above what the average is for your typical month. We pay about a $60 a ton tipping fee to the landfill, which means when the truck goes out there for every ton of garbage, you have to pay $60 to be able to tip the garbage into the dump. And during this month, we get about an extra $40,000 in costs. There's also overtime costs because the DPW workers are out there longer, that's about Proposed changes is that during this period where there is such a volume of bulk garbage out there that we would not pick up during that period except for white goods, which are appliances such as washing machines, refrigerators, items such as that, that we would have a drop-off area out at the DPW yard on Jersey Avenue, where if you wanted to put stuff in your pickup truck, car, or friend's car, whatever, you can take it out there and drop it off out there at, at no cost. And that there are other ways to remove bulk waste, such as hiring private contractors, such as Dot Junk, and there are a number of local junkmen who will pick up items such as that. There is an item called Bagster, which you can get at Home Depot or Lowe's for about 30 bucks. You take this basically plastic dumpster home, you fill it up with QB Guard of whatever you want to put in it, and Waste Management will come by and, and pick it up. Or you can also, you know, if you're leaving, you're moving out of New Brunswick, put it on your, your truck and take it with you. They're also proposing that there be more education to the community as to what the rules are, so that people know that the moratorium will be coming up, they can prepare for it, either put items out earlier or save them until after the, the moratorium is over, as to know what kind of items can go out and what other options they have for getting rid of the bulk garbage. We're also encouraging Rutgers to get involved with a program called Dump and Run. This is a voluntary program that is done at about 25 other universities across the country, including Ohio State, University of Illinois, University of Pittsburgh, where volunteers will come and pick up the bulk items, take them, and either store them until the fall, or have a flea market at that time, where you can, other people who may need an end table, or a sofa, or whatever, can go pick it up from this, this project. As I said, it's used at a number of other universities, and the dollars that are raised for purchasing these used items are given to charity, it helps reuse the furniture and divert waste from the landfill. At Ohio State last year, they said they had a very successful Dump and Run, they had 4,300 attendees, and about 93 tons of waste were diverted from landfills, and about $4,000 was raised for, for local charities. from landfills, and about four thousand dollars was raised for local charities. So just to sum up, what the problems we've found are blocked sidewalks, blocked on-street parking, postponed trash pickup in other neighborhoods, because of the volume of bulk waste that comes out in the mid-May to mid-June period, that the city's costs are increasing by about forty thousand dollars for that month compared to other months, proposing that there be no bulk pickup during that month, that we're having a drop-off option out at DPW, and encouraging Rutgers to get involved with a Dump and Run program or a program similar to that. That's the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. At this time, we'll look forward to comments and questions from the public. Again, raise your hand, we recognize and need to speak. If you have anything to say, say it through the chair. Don't get in our way if anybody else has a different, if you may have a differing opinion. Mr. Cradville, name and address, please.
Charles Cradville, eighty-six Patterson Street. Mr. Council President, members of council, Mr. Lawton, Representative of the Law Department, I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening about what I feel is a very important issue with regard to this ordinance, leadership. And I first want to thank you, Council President, for your leadership. I spoke with you earlier today, and since you've taken over as the president, you've always been very respectful to the public, and you've definitely demonstrated that the public should also respect the council, and I hope everyone tonight will be constructive and show respect for every member of the council here tonight. And I also want to applaud Councilman Egan for demonstrating his leadership. He recently got elected on a campaign to fight litter and deal with some of the many different garbage-related issues we have in the city, and I applaud him for taking the lead on that, and his passion is definitely appreciated. This is a serious issue of concern in many city neighborhoods, not just for the aesthetic reasons, but also for safety reasons, and it's important that the council work to address it swiftly, but not before everyone's been afforded the opportunity to contribute to the discussion. I know that we probably all are in agreement that college students in New Brunswick are an asset, and while in some ways they may be a liability at times, for instance, due to high turnover in the housing, it's important to note that they more than make up these liabilities with their numerous contributions to the city. And it's of the utmost importance that we provide a safe, legal and easy way for any homeowner, landlord, renter and student to dispose of bulk waste items regardless of when their lease ends. It should be noted that most New Brunswick residents do not own cars and frequently come to the city directly from other countries or faraway places across the nation. And New Brunswick's a great city, and it has a lot of spectacular reasons to relocate here, the university, the two major hospitals, the worldwide headquarters of Johnson &amp; Johnson. And many of the folks who decide to come here can only stay for a short period of time. So while many graduate and undergrad Rutgers students set up shop here for upwards of four years or more, many others only come for four months, or six months, or a year. And it's important that we respect the needs of these folks, even though they may only call New Brunswick home for a short time, they ought to be treated with the same respect as any taxpayer or homeowner. Many people, when they first arrive in this city, have no choice but to purchase some basic furnishings at a place like Walmart, or perhaps one of the many furniture stores in New Brunswick that might be walking distance from their home. And when they leave, the replacement tenants may very well have furniture of their own and have no need to adopt the furniture that this short-time resident might have brought in. It's also important to note that sadly, oftentimes, folks are leaving their homes, at least in part because of constrained finances, whether it's being evicted, or just not being able to continue paying rent. Oftentimes, they may owe their landlord or their fellow housemates money and not be in a position to take on significant expense. In many cases, their security deposit is already spoken for. And while there's much reason to fear for the security deposits of tenants under this proposal, landlords should also have serious concerns about the ordinance. Situations where tenants are expecting to lose much, if not all, of their deposit gives the tenant zero incentive to follow this law or attempt to avoid the fines, which could leave property owners to suffer increasingly serious consequences each year, literally thousands of dollars in fines by the third offense. That is, unless they go out of their way to dispose of garbage that was not theirs in the first place. And I don't know if the intent of the ordinance is to force landlords to clean up after their tenants, but it may very well be the effect. Those who make an attempt to follow the law and avoid the fines, they may do so in a detrimental way to their community and to the next occupants. Imagine if you had a vermin-infested or a broken piece of furniture, but you knew curbing it could cost you significantly. Many folks would not want to use their private vehicle to haul something that's vermin-infested. And many people are not legally eligible to drive a car or even to rent a truck, and with the only option remaining, calling private hauling services, they're more likely to leave the hazardous items in their home, on their property, or worse, place it elsewhere in the neighborhood where no one will be held accountable for it, and, you know, children and people who might not know any better could get into trouble with it, as was pointed out in the presentation. So creative students and other outgoing residents are likely going to leave bulk items at a corner or in front of another property. It's especially important to note how easy it is to evade punishment, and there is reason to be concerned that many property owners will wrongfully receive tickets, and these tickets require a mandatory court appearance. This could be just because of their neighbor's garbage, or someone who's not even from the neighborhood or the city. This ordinance is hard to enforce, and there is an ordinance already on the books that governs this, which I think most folks who violate don't get written on. Now, my last point, this is fundamentally unfair to folks living in other neighborhoods, other parts of the city, further from Rutgers, while students and renters live all over the city, and there's significant turnover in many neighborhoods. The precise problem that Councilman Egan has identified is the tremendous concentration of demand for this service, both in terms of the time in the calendar year, as well as being constrained to just a few select neighborhoods in the city that are predominantly occupied by college students. And it doesn't seem right to tell folks in neighborhoods like Rutgers Village, the downtown where I live, Schwartz Robeson, or Livingston Additive, that they have to give up this important service for a full month merely because folks in other neighborhoods are moving in and out in large numbers for a variety of reasons. Now, I live in downtown now, and we enjoy daily garbage pickup, and needless to say, I'd be happy to give up that service for a few days if it could help my former neighborhood to deal with this serious problem. And I think we can actually come up with some viable solutions that will satisfy all parties here. For example, the issue of ultimate concern to me is not the unsightly appearance of the garbage, but rather traffic circulation and safety concerns. You know, I saw firsthand bulk pickups just on August first, the morning after trucks slowed down, and definitely traffic backup did develop. This can be dangerous, and I think any solution should make the important distinction between major thoroughfares and side streets, where traffic jams are much less likely and less dangerous. And so while I applaud Councilman Egan for his initiative and his passion on this issue, there's most definitely a need for further discussion. Tonight is the beginning of an important collaborative process that will include all facets of the public that this law may affect. Our quality of life is too important to rush through an ordinance that could punish innocent people, or one that has not been fully evaluated by folks that it will affect most. I speak, of course, of the student community, most of whom do not spend their summer in the city, but will be here in a couple of weeks. There is an official government body, the Student City Advisory Committee, which is an excellent group of community members, city officials and student representatives. This group has convened several times specifically to address the many serious and unique concerns related to the university's presence in the city and its youthful but responsible student body. This committee should be given a fair chance to review the legislation that is before the council tonight and to make recommendations before it is adopted into law. The input of this body is critical to ensuring all stakeholders are satisfied with the solution. Further, the effective date of this ordinance is May the tenth, 2012, so there's plenty of time and very little urgency to adopt tonight. And just a few examples of some potential solutions, off the top of my head, credit Mr. Rendell with the first one, which he mentioned a couple of weeks ago. Perhaps arranging a shared services agreement with a nearby community could supply the city Department of Public Works with the extra manpower it needs just for that week. Or the city could devise a fair system for folks to compensate the city for picking up bulk items, but make sure that that solution isn't cost prohibitive and doesn't involve breaking the law if you can't make it to that Saturday morning situation. So for example, Somerville Township charges for all bulk pickups that they do, but they do offer them year-round on a weekly basis, and the fees are very affordable, ranging from three dollars to twelve dollars a night, and those fees are set with the costs associated in mind. Now, other ideas won't even cost taxpayers or residents or landlords. For instance, you know, we can return to the practice several years ago of having city employees distribute flyers to homes in the neighborhoods that are most likely to have departing students, to remind them of the city policies, which I feel are very fair as currently devised. Nevertheless, I understand that there is a serious problem here, and I'm just here to say, I am here to help. There are a lot of people here who are concerned about this. I know some of these folks have been elected by the student government to represent the students, and I think it's important that their voices be heard and they be able to contribute to whatever solution we find to be the best. So to that end, I just want to urge the council to please, please delay adoption of this ordinance. Let's table it until we can have the students come back and the students of the advisory committee convene and take, say, forty-five days to evaluate the current situation, what our options are. It's all a lot of great ideas in that presentation, and I think there's a lot more great ideas that these student leaders who have demonstrated their leadership in their community and their constituents have invested in their representation, I think that those folks, those leaders should be welcomed, their leadership should be welcomed, and I think that it's great to see so many people stepping up and having an interest in this issue. I hope you will give them all a voice. Thank you so much.
All right. Chris Butler, Sixth Parkview Drive. Frankly, I think your ordinance is well thought out, but I think you're still being far too generous. To have residents be able to have curbside pickup eleven months out of the year surpasses most municipalities in the area. Most municipalities schedule pickups twice a season, actually two seasons, spring and fall. They do a spring pickup, and then you're only still allowed to have three items. And anything over three items should pay for. The ability to be able to put stuff out on the curb eleven months out of the year is terrific for New Brunswick residents. I realize that some areas of town, I guess the student population of rental properties rely on this. To me, it just appears that it's a negative externality of the landlords. This is a landlord issue. This is not a college student issue. The landlords are allowing their tenants to throw stuff out on the curb in bulk along entire streets with no regard to the next-door neighbor who might never put anything out all year long. We're just subsidizing the landlords, in my opinion, and this is a very generous ordinance.
It's black, right?
It's blue, blue. My name's Matt Cordero, one on Lewis Street. I'm here before you today, and thank you all for letting me speak. I'm actually the new student body president, and I represent approximately thirty thousand undergraduate students that attend Rutgers New Brunswick. Again, among them are the thousands of students who live off, you know, College Ave and off Nick 11 around the rest of the city. And again, I came here to ask you all to table a bill so then the student, rather the city student advisory committee could look at it. I really like a lot of the ideas, the Dump and Run, I think is great. I think there would be interest from organizations on campus to institute some type of program like that. But when something really does affect the students so much, I really do think that they should have some sort of input into such an ordinance. Mayor Jim Cahill, you know, made this committee, I thought, just for ordinances like this. So again, I would like the council to table this, bring it back to the fall, let the committee look at it, so we can really find solutions that benefit everyone involved. And I'm here, I would like to talk to Mr. Bray, I believe he was the one who helped set it up in the past. So right when the school, you know, the fall session starts, we can immediately begin to solve this problem. I have lots of really dedicated student leaders who know the city very well and who really do call it home and are very fond of it, and I really want to bring them to the table with the rest of the residents of the city, you know, so we can find a solution to this problem. You know, I really think something like this maybe needs more of a scalpel approach rather than a hammer, and, you know, this gives us a chance to work with you, you know, table the bill, and let's find a solution to this problem. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mitch Elgerlis, thirty-eight Laurel Place, New Brunswick. I just want to say that I'm in support of this ordinance. I think it's a good idea. A lot of, I take my daughter on walks up and down our block. It is a problem when there's bulk ordinance, bulk trash, sorry. And I'm also a landlord in town, and I know that when our tenants move out, we're on top of them, you can't leave stuff out, you brought it with you, you need to take it with you, kind of thing. And I think part of it is my responsibility as a landlord to make sure that they're not leaving trash all over the New Brunswick streets, so I just want to say that I'm completely in support of this ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Chal Benoja, I live on Central Avenue in New Brunswick. I just want to say, first of all, I can't believe that I am with you on an issue this time. Now, what happens is, I have seen a landlord who has property on Gilden Street. His house faces Gilden, but the back of his house is on Central. What he does is, he's been coming with his car or pickup truck, and he is unloading and putting the garbage on Central. Now, the only thing I could do next time is take his plate number or whatever, and maybe he could get notice on it. The only other thing I have to say is, many years ago, they used to have dumpsters in the parks, like that little park divides Gilden and Central, to put there where they were dumping their garbage in there instead of on the sidewalk. I mean, that would be a good idea to put a couple of those out to get rid of most of the bulk. And as far as landlords, they have many properties in New Brunswick and out of New Brunswick that I'm sure they could afford to pay a person coming in to pick up their bulk and guarantee they could put it under income tax as an expense.
Do you agree?
So that's all I have to say.
Who else?
CNN Middle, one on our first address. My name is John Asprey. I live in Board Six, District Two. I'm actually the Democrat Committee Man for that district. My district is between Hamilton and Central and between Gilden and the edge of town, and that's a predominantly student neighborhood, but also includes longtime residents. And also, I've spoken to some landlords there. I actually went around my neighborhood to talk to people about this ordinance, and they were almost unilaterally upset about the idea that we would not be able to throw out a chair. In fact, throwing out a chair would cost three hundred fifty dollars during this month, because that's what the bulk of the bill actually discusses, is a two hundred fifty dollar fine for a first offense plus a hundred dollar per item. Now, it somewhat escapes me that the, that while, you know, the bulk garbage pickup may be a costly expense, that the price of picking up a single chair would necessitate a three hundred fifty dollar fine. I think that that is a gross overcalculation of the fiscal element of the problem. I also want to say that as a student in a neighborhood of predominantly students, students really actually look to the bulk garbage pickup, the move-out season, as a way to get their furniture for the coming year. I myself have garbage picked perfectly good furniture and used it in my living room because I quite frankly cannot afford a new set of furniture when I moved from a house where maybe the couch I was using belonged to a roommate, and now I need a couch. So I use a couch I find on the street, it's perfectly good couch. By eliminating bulk garbage pickup, we actually eliminate the ability for students to furnish their homes, and also, this is true for many of the members of the community that are not just students. I've seen, walking around in the middle of June, I see many, many families actually going around picking up furniture, because there is good furniture, but again, at least a lot of the students don't own cars, they don't have the ability to transport many of these items, and leaving them, it's very much an element of one man's trash is another man's treasure. And I really do think that bulk garbage pickup is actually one of the clean- And I really do think that bulk garbage pickup is actually one of the quaint niceties of my neighborhood. It's weird, but when you go out and there's like, oh, there's a chair. I could use that chair. I could bring it into my home, and it could become my chair. I think that that's like, I really enjoy that, and I actually, it takes off a lot of the fiscal burden for me as a student. So I just want to say that this ordinance, I mean, there is an element of aesthetics that maybe people value, but during June, I actually think it's really great to be able to find new furniture on my street. That may seem silly, but I like to be able to find furniture for free on the street. And I also think that if there is something that's destined to be garbage, that maybe we should implement this solution made by, I'm sorry, I forget your name in the blue shirt from Central Ave.
Joe.
Joe? Made by Joe, about having a dumpster at those little triangular areas and maybe just at a corner. If it's really, really garbage, then there should be a place to throw it out that's not halfway across town. Because carrying a sofa up the hill to Lewis and then down Jersey Ave, I don't think that that's like a reasonable thing to ask of anyone, especially multiple sofas, mattresses, et cetera. So I'd like to thank the council for my time. I'd like to ask that you consider tabling the bill until maybe further study could be made. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim Walsh. I live at 165 Shore Boulevard in Keansburg, and I'm a landlord here in New Brunswick. And I appreciate the council taking up this issue of litter. It's been a major concern of mine when I was a resident of New Brunswick. And I see these problems that arise from bulk pickup. I'm a little concerned about some of the ways that the ordinance is put together. And I think that a lot of the calls that have come tonight to delay this and ask for more community input are well needed. And if there is some sort of student advisory board and you're looking for the input of a landlord, I'd be more than willing to help and provide that perspective on that committee if it's created. The city, you know, right now charges sixty-five, seventy-five dollar fines, which I don't know if they're enforced or not. I do know that one of my concerns is that I can't necessarily watch everything my tenants are doing. I can't be there. I'm glad that the other landlord's able to do that. But if garbage is moved out to the street in a way that's illegal, and the fine is then levied against myself, I'm probably going to wind up taking that money out of their security deposit at the end of the day, which, and then I'm going to wind up turning it over to the city of New Brunswick. And so any damage or other things that are done to my property, and if it's the third offense that's happened over however many years, then the security deposit won't even cover that, so I'll be paying for that out of pocket. So I'm concerned about just the enforcement mechanism that's there and how that's going to be brought out. Because I'm not sure that the current law is actually being enforced and has been enforced well. Earlier this year, in December, my tenants left town right before the snowstorm came, and were not there to clear the sidewalk, and I received a fine for that. I went to court to explain the situation and say I didn't realize my tenants weren't there. They got actually stuck in Philadelphia, and were not able to come back to clear the road. But I was still fined and responsible for that fine. Thankfully, my tenants paid that fine, because I'm not a wealthy landlord that has the ability to just, you know, absorb those costs. But I'm concerned that these costs actually would be prohibitive and may prevent me from making upgrades and repairs to my property that would make it a nicer place for people in New Brunswick to live. I'm also concerned that, I guess, that the, you know, that the costs that are being talked about, the forty thousand dollars a year that the city spends on this. You may see the overall budget of the city go down, but I think that something that's important is to actually look at the aggregate amount that would be spent by residents. You know, we socialize these programs to help keep our total cost down. And if a number of residents are each having to pay these individual private pickup companies to pick up our garbage, you're actually, could be collectively costing the city residents more money than you would be had you had actually just continued the bulk pickup program as is or looked for other solutions to address this problem. And so I think that it would make sense to take this and put aside, there's no reason to rush to this because the ordinance wouldn't take place until May. And so there's plenty of time to actually look at this issue and explore this issue further and come up with a solution that I think can make everybody happy. Because I, as a landlord, have a vested interest in having this community being a great place for tenants to live, and I want it to be a great place for people to live. And so thank you very much, and I urge you to please take time to delay this and think about this process. And I'd be more than happy to help out in this in any way that I'd be able to if you're interested in that support. So thank you very much.
My name is Sean Lannigan. I'm a Democratic committee man from Board Five, District Two, along Harvey Street. I'd like to address a few of the issues that I have with this proposed ordinance.
Project.
Yeah. The thing that I have the biggest issue with is that you're in essence telling people not to put out their garbage. I just think that makes no sense. People should be putting out their garbage where we can find it and can pick it all up. I understand that there's a problem, and it's a problem that needs to be addressed. I'm not suggesting that we can just gloss over it. But the solution that's proposed is all sticks and no carrots. It's all punishment and no rewards. The, I think if the city does decide to issue fines, they should be based on the real cost of that garbage pickup. To take it to the levels that are laid out in this proposal is frankly punitive, and it will only lead to further problems. You can't just, to me, I think this is privatization, to be honest with you. What is happening is that the city is abdicating its responsibility to take care of these sanitation needs. And the reason why we instituted city governments to take care of this is because the city government can provide it at the lowest cost possible to every resident. And I think Mr. Walsh made a really fantastic point that by forcing New Brunswick residents to hire private garbage haulers, that solution will ultimately cost more than having the city government do it themselves. I think that the suggestion for the dump and run is fantastic and can be implemented without instituting the severe penalties. I was thinking more about the problem, and I think that part of what is at issue here is what's sometimes referred to as, or what might solve this problem is sometimes referred to as a time shift. So the best way I can explain that is TiVo for garbage. If you could find a way to get people to put their garbage out before May or after May, or in June, by creating incentives for them to do that, that would limit how much happens at once. The problem is the amount of volume that comes in that one month, and that's a function of when people's leases are up. And that's no one's fault, and people shouldn't be punished for that. It's just, it just happens to be the way that the leases in this city work. Yeah, I do feel like this is a very strange situation because it's my understanding that Mr. Egan has connections to organized labor. And to be honest with you, this is the first time I've ever heard anyone say, coming from a union background, that there's too much work. Union leaders always say the opposite. They say, don't take the work away from these workers. We need to, you know, keep these people employed. I think this is an opportunity to give overtime to New Brunswick workers. I understand that there's, you know, costs associated with that, but it is the city's responsibility to take care of this. And by doing it together as a city, we can make it more cost effective for every resident. Thank you.
Bruce Newling, Forty-Seven Huntington Street. I was particularly interested in the dump and run concept that was set forth by the presenter. One thought that occurred to me that is related to this, I mean, bearing in mind the tremendous losses that people across the country have sustained through flooding on the Mississippi, through hurricane losses in the south, through tornado losses in the Midwest, that perhaps an arrangement could be made whereby following on a model that they seem to have in Ethicot, which is a private enterprise system, where students, when they leave in May, put their furniture in plywood lockable containers that are parked at curbside, and then these are picked up by a private corporation, stored efficiently in a warehouse for the summer, and then brought back in the fall when the students are ready to either resume their occupation of an old apartment or take a new one. Now, that idea of a lockable container then, which could be filled with usable items, which would then be donated to charity, the pickup would be either American Red Cross or some other organization that has a national network. And the benefit of this to the people donating it would be that the fair market value of the items encosed in the lockable container would then be a tax write-off for them. So there would be a real advantage then to people to use this system to dispose of furniture, and it would then, of course, the whole idea would have to be very carefully worked out. I'm not pretending to explain how that would be done this evening, but it seems to me shocking to see good furniture. And people have spoken about picking some of this up for their own use. I've certainly picked up some of this in the past. It's just shocking to me to see this stuff dumped when it could be used and dumped and caused the landfills to fill up so that we're going to be eventually at the point where we have to ship garbage out of town at a huge cost to the city. So if we can stop the stuff going to the dumps in the first place, we're going to save costs in the long term in the future. And the other thought that I have is that if indeed landlords who rent unfurnished apartments are imposing a cost on the city because their tenants, when they leave, are dumping this stuff on the street and it has to be disposed of, then perhaps the city should consider giving a tax, a real estate tax discount to those landlords who register furnished apartments because then they are not generating, year after year, this problem of mass dumping of furniture on the street. So I think I'd just like to ask that you consider perhaps both those aspects.
John Conley, 109 Lewis Street. Well, I don't want to reiterate what Senator Gordon said. Some really great ideas have been, am I speaking loud enough? I have a bit of a sore throat. Great. So some great ideas have been brought up by various people here. And of course, people have stressed how hurtful extra fines would be to residents. What I do want to say is I am a transplant from, actually, Glassboro, New Jersey, kind of Rowan University. So this whole living in a college town and seeing garbage out on June first every year is not a new thing to me. So actually, when I heard that this was a problem that was happening in New Brunswick that people thought to take issue with, what I did was I called some people who work in the municipal office back in Glassboro and asked how they dealt with it, and they were very confused as to the concept of limiting pickup in a specific month. They just kept repeating, like, put your stuff on the curb, call us, we'll get it. So I kind of feel like if a town that's much smaller than New Brunswick is, that has much less resources than New Brunswick does, can handle a large student population like Rowan University, I believe the estimate would be around nine thousand students there, then I feel like a more concrete answer than what is proposed currently will come out of New Brunswick's situation as well. Also, something that just occurred to me actually when Sean Lannigan was speaking, in eighteen hundreds New York, there used to be a specific day when everyone's lease ran out. It was moving day. And that was complete and utter chaos, as you can imagine. I'm sorry, I'm a history major. I love to give all of these examples. If eighteen hundreds New York can reform its codes so that leases can run out on different days, I'm pretty sure twenty-first century New Brunswick.
Well, you say, I don't think it's a factor of the city limiting on lease on it. I think it's more the school year.
Well, in this specific example, I was giving.
I know, but that's what drives it, is the length of the school year. So it's not a city saying you've got to introduce that to the first row.
I just, I see these as parallel examples is all I was getting at.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, it's not us, it's the school year.
I will yield to what I want to speak next.
How are you? My name is Andrew Killa. I'm a resident of 109 Lewis Street. I have a few particular issues with this proposed ordinance that I learned from my friend John and my other residents. One is the date. It does fall directly upon the exchange of leases for almost all of the properties I know of in my wards and adjacent wards. I just find it peculiar how this couldn't have been spread out whereas we're given the maybe a three-month transition period to put garbage out, a year, seven months. Why it's restricted to not doing it in one month when there is all the garbage is beyond me. And my second issue, I just don't understand why a moratorium is necessary as opposed to an aggregated pickup or an alternative pickup or some sort of, or alternative recycling program. That's my misunderstanding of the issue. And my second problem is that unless you're going to implement some mass informative educational broadcasting program where you can tell all the thirty thousand students in Rutgers that this can no longer take place, I guarantee you, come next June, regardless of the fines, regardless of the ordinance, if it's passed, that you will find piles of garbage on the sides of the streets. Because I personally call the DPW because I know it's a service I can use. I love using it. I have brush pickup all the time, and I clean my neighbors' backyards, and I love doing it. But I can assure you, I'm one of a very, very small contingent of students who either knows of that service or chooses to use it anyway. And my concern is what is, you did list some very nice things in the PowerPoint that dropped and go, some other programs were listed, would be very nice. What is your actual alternative if you still have these piles of garbage pulling up and you start to build this giant backlog of fines and complaints and questionings from residents and landlords who now want to go to the city, to you, to inform you, why is this taking place? Why are we being fined? Can we challenge these fines? What can I do with my garbage as it is? That's my primary issue, is I don't actually see an alternative to your moratorium. I just see you saying, no garbage, find some way to deal with it ourselves. But that's what I perceive to be the issue here. I personally think that this should be at least delayed until some, definitely more concrete solution. To some parts of the garbage may definitely be made. Maybe it's we're only picking up certain items, or we don't want certain items. I know mattresses are the most favorite of all items. I see them everywhere. I can count them by the hundreds if I wanted. Maybe if we only collect mattresses, or we only charge for mattresses, or we only charge for pieces of furniture, then I could see some solution out of this. But to curb the collection of waste that you know exists, that you know accumulates every year, it just, it really does not make any sense. It does not make any sense. And I can't see a problem with paying a few DPW guys, take out two tandem dump trucks, make two runs a month at night, and pick it all up that way. I would like to see further development of this issue personally. And I think I stand with the members of the council and the members of the community as well. Thank you for your time.
Thomas Peoples from Loveberry Avenue. And I'm a block captain. I've been fighting the litter for years because I run the Lincoln Garden Block Association. Now, Lincoln Garden is unique in a way with my daughters. Because I hope the councilmen have been out there, like, Lainey Place runs from Loveberry to Quinn, and it's go homes, and they have no front yard to put out buckeye. And they had no front yard to put out buckeye. So what they do is they put it on the intersection. For instance, I go there and go on Loveberry, and right across from there is one Lany. So a lot of people in Lany, they'll put their buckeyes in. So I wake up in the morning, and there's mattresses, sofas, and the people there, I call, of course, they're not accountable. And Mr. Director here, how many times have I called, and said, look, am I right, Mr. Director? Would you please come pick this stuff up? So here's a situation where if this goes into effect, right, this is going to be a mess, this is going to be a disaster, this is going to be cruel. And nobody's accountable. I mean, I call Mike Mahoney, and I say, can we make the people at one Lany accountable? Because actually, they're supposed to be, that's part of their responsibility to clean the front of the house. So what, they sit up a hundred yards into the street? I think it's a hundred yards, probably more than that. But Mike Mahoney, he said that's unfair, because the people at one Lany, they're not putting this trash out. So this is a huge problem for Lincoln Gardens. And my question is, do you guys take that into account? I don't know if there's other areas in New Brunswick like that, but if this goes into effect, there's going to be a bunch of trash out there. And how are we going to get it removed? And so I just want to add that to the discussion.
My name's Matt Corsta. I live on Corn Street, and I work on Patterson Street. Thank you for taking the time to hear my comments. So it's, I can see that there is a big problem with the volume of garbage in, at the end of May and the start of June. Doesn't strike me that the ordinance is really solving the problem, though. It seems like you're more, more just sort of banning the having of the problem. It reminds me, it reminds me a lot of the, famously, like, 10 years ago, the president of Uganda banned potholes in the capital city. Needless to say, potholes remain the major problem. So, of course, of course, it would be entirely, of course, it would be entirely impossible for people to comply with the ordinance and bring their garbage to Jersey Avenue, or pay someone to haul it away. But, but I think, and if you, if you look at some of the younger faces in the room who smile, nod when I say this, you'll know how true it is that people are zero percent going to do that. And they should, in fact, it would be great if they did. But it's, but I mean, honestly, and to God, I think you're probably going to end up with a situation where there is no bulk pickup between, what was it, May 10th and June 10th?
Yes.
There's no bulk pickup between May 10th and June 10th. So from May 10th to June 10th, the streets just overflow with garbage, and that's like a new thing in the city now, like, welcome to garbage month, that's just, that's just what we do here. Which looks like, John said, there's something charmed to it, actually. I kind of like finding bulk items, so in a way, I sort of, I a little bit invite that, but not really, not seriously. The other thing is that it is universally understood in the student neighborhoods. And again, I think, take a look, people will smile, nod at this, if you have too much garbage, just sort of break it up between a few houses, and that's a really terrible thing to do if you know that people are going to get fined for it, but it's still going to happen. So, so what happens by, I think, I think the reality of the situation ends up being that by banning bulk pickup, you turn fines for bulk items into this sort of, into this sort of crapshoot where whether you're putting stuff out or not, there's like a 60/40 chance that you're going to get fined. And one last point is that it strikes me that the, the volume of enforcement that would become necessary for something like this would be, would be so, so great that the city probably, probably can't or won't, but mostly can't, apply the fines uniformly and fairly to everybody. So you end up, you end up with a situation like the current litter ordinance that doesn't make the city any cleaner, or the current noise ordinance that doesn't make the city any quieter, where really, all you end up getting out of the law is not, is not cleaner streets, but just more revenue. And if there, if you feel there's a need to offset the cost of garbage cleaner for more revenue, I think maybe more sensible ways to go about raising that revenue. So that's why I'm saying, thank you.
In fact, name address please.
Charles Smith, resident of 101st Street. I heard everyone's comments, and I saw the presentation, I thought there were some great ideas on the whole side. As a resident, the trash is a bit annoying home, there's trash there, there's animals that come and they, they make garbage out of your treasures. But as a parent, I have a student in the University of Michigan. It's not an option. Just like I moved him in, I move him out. You've got to know when you're going. You've got to know when you're leaving, because you can't. So you know when your lease is out. The same people who moved you in, I feel they should be responsible for moving you out.
Anyone else who has not spoken here? Name address please.
Karen Monis, 24 Handy Street, a longtime resident and Democratic chairperson for District 23. I am a supporter of this. I feel that everybody should clean up, everybody should be responsible for this stuff. The landlord should be, after all their tenants, not only the students, it's tenants all over. We are very lucky, we have a very good public works department. The literature that they send out, they give enough ample literature for the residents. It's all over, posted on street signs, all through town, and all through the college. We're very lucky, I'm a supporter of this. Also, the timeframe that you're saying, May 10th to June 10th, that's Rutgers graduation. We have a lot of visitors to our town. Why should they come in and see the park chief, so they're left by people who don't care? Thank you.
Anyone else? Name address please.
Amy Bronstein, I'm the Democratic committee woman, I work at District 2. I have a question, and I'd like to make a comment. My question actually refers to the amended version of the ordinance. I'm having trouble finding the amended language, and I understand that it actually includes the fines. I was wondering if you could just kind of go over it, or if somebody could explain the fines and how they change.
The only fine that was changed is the pickup charge. If someone put garbage out during the moratorium, the fines charge, they were in the ordinance that you originally published.
So it's the per item charge? I don't have any information, I clearly threw the, you know, it was increased from $100 per item to $250 per item?
$250 for all the items.
For all the items, okay. And then the comment that I wanted to make was that New Brunswick is actually, you know, is home to, the majority of residents are renters. I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 70% of the city residents rent where they live. And it's only like the certain, like, you're, and nobody's putting any more garbage out, I think, per household of these renters. It's just, you know, a concentration of when the leases end. And this ordinance, you know, is pretty much tailored to target the student population at, and these are public school students, at a public university. And as you know, like, college education is essential to climbing into the middle class, and at least trying to stay there in America these days. You can't do without one. And as prices increase, it makes it difficult for people to stay in university, and a number of people that transferred from community college, and a people that had to, had to leave. And I would say that, you know, it's a price, like, you shouldn't make it more difficult for these young people to achieve a middle-class status in America when, you know, the odds are against us. You know, the debt ceiling, they were discussing Pell Grants. There's all these burdens that the young people have to pay, and really, like, students are trying to better themselves. And I think a lot of the students here, representatives from the student government and then the communities, are willing to work with the council. I would really urge you to delay approving this ordinance until the semester starts. And the student city advisory committee chaired by Mayor Cahill could really kind of like look at some of these solutions. I really, I want to applaud the dump and run idea. That was great. I know FreeCycle had been, you know, I've been talking with them, I dropped off some information about FreeCycle with the city. And I actually was doing some research. 2011, May 15th was the first national curb day, which is like trying to find a way to exchange usable items within the city. They have a New York state, they're trying to make this, falls on May 15th, you would not even have an option to, to kind of participate in like such an event where it kind of emphasizes reuse and not just dumping usable items. So please, I beg you, to delay voting on this ordinance until the semester.
Anyone else who has not spoken?
Good evening. My name is Bruce Shapiro. I'm with the New Jersey Association of Realtors. First want to thank Councilman Negan. I know he spoke with one of my colleagues earlier today and helped us obtain a copy of the ordinance. And a lot of what I was going to say tonight, like many others has already been said, we are requesting that the ordinance be tabled. Like many have said, it's not scheduled to take effect until May, so there is some time to discuss it. I know one of the ideas that I heard, I think, was actually from the first people here, was looking to see if some of the other towns, whether it's Highland Park, East Brunswick, North Brunswick, can help out with the bulk pickup, being that New Brunswick, at that time rightfully so, does have a lot of students coming in and out of town. One of the ideas I had, just sitting here earlier tonight, New Brunswick is unique in that Rutgers is not the only college in the state, but it's, New Brunswick's one of the only cities that has the college right in the city, not kind of enclosed campus such as Wyandotte at King University up in Union. Possibly reaching out to other towns similar to New Brunswick where the colleges are in the middle of the city, see how they handle their pickup during those times of years when students are leaving in May and June. So I just wanted to ask that the council takes some time, rather than passing the ordinance tonight. We know that there is obviously problems, saw some of the pictures, and unlike most other towns I go into, this is actually my town. I live here in New Brunswick, down on Edpass Road, in the southern end of town. So I have seen it when coming up through the Rutgers area. But there is a need to basically, if we're going to do it, so be it, let's do it right, so to speak.
Anyone else with a last vote? Is there anyone?
Charles, in the Harbors Street, in New Brunswick. Just a couple of points. Number one is that the current ordinances we have are very clearly delineated on the notes that are sent every year for recycling and trash, and that is three items per unit, the dwelling unit. If you call in advance, up to six items per unit. I have never heard of that particular ordinance being enforced. If it were properly enforced, on these days, you went around the garbage pickup, and the garbage truck simply picked up three items per unit, and the inspectors followed and issued summonses for those that exceeded, I guarantee the same as the fines would probably exceed the amount of cost to the city and would take care of that. And as you've heard expressed before, we can always call upon neighboring communities to help us out on these days, or even schedule following pickup days the next day or the next two days. So that's my number one problem. The ordinance we have now are not currently enforced. If they were enforced, I think it would solve the problem more efficiently than this ordinance. Number two, the leases for next May 10th to June 10th have basically already been negotiated. They've been signed. They're usually signed for June 1st or July 1st and run a full year. What you're saying, basically, is that the landlords have not had an opportunity to put into their leases as they were negotiated, notice that this was a new law that was going to be extremely expensive to them and that it was going to be passed on to the students. And as Mr. Walsh indicated, in many cases, it will actually, the law limits you to a month and a half rent as security. When you get up there, $2,000 fine plus $100, or $250 for bulk items, you can easily exceed the amount of, not having security, especially when you consider that the students typically will leave damages to the apartment that also draw on that same security. So I think that's being unfair to the landlords, and in a way unfair to the tenants, because they're not giving proper notice in the leases in loud and clear languages. A third point is that the way the ordinance is written, there's a possible implied potential, putting a lot of qualifications on that, conflict with the ordinance that I stated before about the three items versus the six items. The ordinance as proposed basically says that you have an alternative, and that is to drive the items up to the DPW grounds, or to hold them until after the moratorium. Well, that's conflicting with the three or six items, because if you're holding bulk items until after the moratorium, the implication might be that you can put out 12, 15, 25 items on June the 11th, or June the 12th, whatever the next garbage pickup is. That's a conflict. If there is in fact a real conflict and a court finds that to be the case, then the court would follow the severability clause in this new ordinance, which says that the other ordinance in conflict became valid. There's a problem there. Finally, I'm concerned as an owner of property who resides at my property, if I wake up on a garbage pickup day during that moratorium period, and I see three, five, seven pieces of bulk items, furniture, whatever, on the front of my property, that some student or some other tenant has placed on my property because they didn't want to spread it out, or they don't want to be caught in this law, what do I do? Do I call the police and file a complaint? How do I avoid a complaint being issued against me and my having a mandatory court appearance? And how do I prove, absent a surveillance system on the front of my property, that I did not place that there? It's on the front of my property. There seems to be an underlying assumption, if it's on my property, I'm responsible. I don't think that's right, and I don't think it's fair.
Anyone else who has not spoken? Mr. Butler? I'm sorry. Yolanda Baker. Go ahead, Yolanda, I already spoke. Name address please.
Yolanda Baker, Ward 4, District 3, committee woman. It was really tough for me to get here tonight, and thankfully, that the time has changed. I'm here tonight just because I just want to make sure that this is the right decision. I feel that we really should take our time with this, make sure we do it right. I know places within New Brunswick where they can actually dump it, and I do not want to see that. We've worked so hard throughout the years to try and come together, to work as one, and to not have so much friction. And I feel if we pass this tonight, then it's going to start all over again. This was a hard struggle. Let's not do this as quickly as making that decision tonight, and let's think on it. Take everybody, take all the comments into consideration.
Mr. Butler, your hand is not high.
No, that's okay. Everyone needed a chance to speak. Chris Butler, Department of Drive. I just want to reiterate what the woman spoke about earlier about bringing her son to Michigan. The students got that stuff, the tenants got that stuff into those apartments somehow. City employees didn't bring it there, for them initially responsible for taking it out. This again, I believe, I say as a homeowner, and as a Rutgers graduate, this is actually a landlord issue. It's a cost of doing business. And when you don't put it on the property owner, or the business owner, you're putting it on someone else. So the owner-occupied homeowners throughout the city have to pick up a tab for what is really a business of rental activity in certain areas of town. I think that the ordinance should not be delayed. This is a landlord issue, not a student body issue. Yes, students are affected. Students are a large majority of the rental population in New Brunswick, but they're not the only rental population in New Brunswick. The fact that a homeowner has to do without 30 days of bulk pickup because of a problem generated by certain property owners is unfair, but I'm willing to do that. Again, I think you're far too generous picking up 11 months out of the year. You should really only be doing it two months out of the year. But you should certainly not be tabling this, waiting for one segment of the population to come back into town.
Anyone else who has not spoken? Is there a ready to...
Yeah, I'd like to jump in. I too am a graduate of the great state university of Rutgers. And I too am a resident of New Brunswick, and use the term born and raised in New Brunswick quite proudly. I'd like to ask, is there anyone here that is a part of the administration of Rutgers University?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, hi. We've heard a lot of discussion, I'm sorry, your name is?
I'm Pete McDonald. I'm the vice president of public affairs. It's nice to be here, and it's great to see the speaker still doing his job here.
We've heard a lot, the students are anxious to participate in coming to a solution. And the city council is anxious to come to a solution. The residents of New Brunswick, of these neighborhoods that are non-students are anxious to come to a solution. And is it, is it possible that we, that we can bring the university administration into this problem-solving session?
One word answer, sure. Yeah, I think, having listened to all the speakers, there's a real problem. And I spoke to Mr. Egan earlier today. I've spoken to lots of people. It's a real problem. It's a landlord problem. It's a student problem. It's a personal responsibility problem. I was on the borough council in Pennington, a little tiny community, 2,500 people. We use it for bulk pickup, we use a sticker approach. And that, you know, people pay $3 a sticker and you get $40, 40 pounds worth of bulk waste goes away. That's one solution. I think, I think the university would be happy to work with the city to try to find a way. Whether you do this ordinance or not, we are going to work to mitigate the impact on the students and help alleviate the problem. And we'd be happy to work with you on that.
Is there any assurances, we've gone down this road with Rutgers University in the past, where they have said yes, they were going to help, and then it turns out they didn't be doing it? Easton Avenue cleanup is one of those over the past few years that that is the case. They already have people come down on Saturdays and clean Easton Avenue. Got done for short periods. I would love to see Rutgers University get involved and become part of the solution, the issue, but I would like some assurances.
Well, I can't give you any assurance beyond my word.
Speaker, I think that's the word.
His word is very good, but he's not the president, so I think the same.
You know, I can, I can just give you my assurance of, well, you know, I'm new, five months on this job. I'll do my best to make sure there's some follow-up and some follow-through to make this happen. I don't know what I can do beyond the assurance, beyond my personal assurance.
I think we should take the opportunity to continue this discussion because I have the sense that there's real energy on every, positive energy on the part of all of the speakers tonight. I know Mr. Egan feels very passionately about that, about this happening. And I'm not suggesting that we're not going to do something to solve this problem, but I don't think we would lose a lot if we put it on the agenda for a future date and allowed this, this conversation to continue in a positive way, to resolve some of the rather concerns that people have raised. And that would be my suggestion.
If I may, I was ready to vote on this resolution and to aid on this ordinance and give it a go. If I would have known that it was going to create such a tension getter that the students from Rutgers and come out here because they were so concerned, even though we've been having this for so many years, we should have done this many years ago. So that way you should have been here trying to give us a solution on how to work together and do this. So I'm encouraged that at least we're breaking grounds in a way that you, because I think that it's a responsibility of the students that do not are buried, the bulk ordinance that the city has, to teach the others that are doing it. We better be conscious that we know, the young man even said it, that you guys know with mamonious that you divide the garbage so that way it's easier, so you know the tricks. So as you acknowledge that. So if you know the tricks, teach the other ones not to do the tricks. Or if they do it with the fire ways. Because I live here and I live in an area also very close to a college, and I don't like to see all that garbage in front of my complex. And I don't think anybody in the city would like to have that in their, would like to see that in the neighborhoods. I mean, as a matter of fact, I think it's kind of disrespectful to those people that have been living for so many years in their homes. And here you are, students that are being educated, and hopefully you are the future of this country, of this city, and you are the first one violating the laws that the city has. So hopefully you will be agents of change among your community. On the other hand, like I said, I was ready to vote on this. I'm willing to give it, just a few, to have Rutgers. I think Rutgers plays a major role also. It's a big responsibility. It's a major player in the community. We are the host community. And I think that Rutgers, we are stepping in the right direction when Rutgers is willing to start the talk and follow on the talk. I think it gives me great encouragement that we have somebody who's willing to, to continue having the dialogue and do something. Ultimately, it's a responsibility of all of us as individuals. It's our responsibility to do what is right. It's not to think that, okay, I'm here only for one year, for four years, and then I can, because in those four years, you're doing blah, 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 let's do this, but then what happens to all of us that are here? What that affects us, whatever things that happens in this city. So again, I would do, you know, I'd be willing to consider giving a little bit more time for all these people. I hope that at the beginning that you have, that we have like 60, 100 people coming like you did tonight, that are there. And, but let's not wait too long. Let's not wait too long. I would give it maybe a month or 45 minutes to have. I believe because of Rutgers, because the students are coming back in a few weeks. So I don't want to stay in this two, two months or three months. I think that the sooner we keep this going, then I would be willing to reconsider this.
I just wanted to say, if you would possibly adjourn this to a date certain, so that the ordinance stays alive.
That's right.
I would suggest that maybe you adopt the amendments, even though you don't vote on it for long, because I think the amendments tweak it and improve the ordinance as from the way it was as it was introduced. Obviously, it's the other colleagues.
My turn?
First of all, this is not a moratorium against any people or individuals in particular. This is a moratorium on garbage. Pictures worth a thousand words. This obscene, obscene amount of garbage that is left curbside at one particular time during that time period has got to come to an end. We provide excellent services in the city of New Brunswick here. And as Mr. Butler spoke in the back, that 11 months out of the year, all these services are still in place. This moratorium affects every citizen of New Brunswick. We're not singling out any particular group, any particular individuals. It's everybody that's going to be affected by the moratorium. We cannot stand and sit here and have obscene amounts of garbage illustrated in those pictures in this town. It's not right. We represent all the taxpayers in this city, not just the students, not just the landlords. We represent everybody up, everybody that's in the city. I'm a Rutgers graduate. Okay? I've lived in the city my whole life. I see this garbage out here. I don't see, I go to other college towns. I don't see it like this. I don't see a massive group of garbage on one thing like this invading the city. Our people are, what about the free flow of traffic? If you're on Lewis Street and there's a garbage that's out there, but we see there for 25 minutes, no one can get by on the street. Somebody trying to get to work. I'm sure we have police officers in the back that have done studies on the traffic flow that, what happens during this, during this time period. Listen, I'm willing to listen and then take a 30-day time period to talk about this more, if somebody comes up with a better solution. Okay? But I believe the city's being fairly fair. We did come up with solutions. Drive it down to Jersey Avenue. Take it with you. You brought it here, take it with you. I personally, I don't believe it's the students that's doing it. I believe it's the absentee landlord who comes in with somebody that's, that cleans the house for them. They come in here, they bring other garbage with them from the town that they just cleaned somewhere else. They bring it to our town, clean this house out, get it ready for the June to June turnover lease, get it all ready, put all the entire contents out on the side of the curb, get it ready for the new tenant, and then the city of New Brunswick, on garbage day, regular garbage day, is supposed to come and pick that up? It's not, I don't think it's right. I think the ordinance is a good ordinance. I think we're doing, I think we're providing a good service for everybody in the city of New Brunswick. I don't think we're trying to curb away from the garbage. We're trying to get rid of the garbage on the streets. Somebody they talk about going through the garbage, and I understand that. I got a father that's a part-time junk collector. We, we, but the people that go through that garbage make it worse. They make it worse. And if you had a choice to go through the garbage, walk, walk the Jersey Avenue. You don't have to drive all, you don't have to walk all around to get it. Ride up the Jersey Avenue, you'll have a plethora. You'll have a pokery that you can go through up there. But this is causing a plight and is disgusting on the city. Anybody, anybody that thinks that those pictures don't say it all, I don't agree with. And we can, everybody has a right to disagree. I respect that. But I'm tired of going through this town and seeing the disgusting of 10 mattresses, 15 tables, one house. We should be obligated to take that? We should be obligated to take the garbage? Because why? It's our duty? It's your duty. It's your duty to put it in a proper place. It's your duty to go with the ordinances that we have in place. It's your duty to get rid of the garbage. We're trying to get it off the curbs. It looks terrible. It looks terrible. We're trying to do the right thing here. I'm trying to do the right thing. I'm trying to be a reasonable person. I'll be glad to do it for 30 days, but let's bring in all the solutions. Let's hear what you got to say. But at the end of the day, we're going to do something about it because it's time, it's over. We're not putting it up with it no more.
Thank you, Mr. Egan.
Thank you.
The problem is that Mr. Egan's just not passionate about this.
So if that does your right thing, yeah, that's a good thing. Because the other will just get you.
I'll think about it. Well, are you asking, you're telling?
Yeah.
Mr. Wonder, no, no, behind you. I've not spoken.
Listen, it's, so you know, consensus is by the council, but I'm glad that we're going to postpone the vote on this. Take some comment group and get Rutgers involved. And we're going to set down a date certain of 21st September, just so you know that before a lot of you start jumping. We're not going to have an argument with Mr. Egan said or with Ms. Garlotti or Ms. Escobar said. That's not what this is. So those of you that are going to stand up and start contradicting what Mr. Egan said, don't, because we're not going to do that tonight. Yes, sir?
My name's Glenn. I'm in the heart, I'm in the trenches. And I'd like to just really applaud what was said just now because not just Mr. Egan, but everyone. I think it's a little bit of a kumbaya moment. It's sounding like we want to hear from all the parties. And there are a lot of interested parties in this city with respect to this issue and many other issues. If I may digress to a little bit of a story, I went to President McCormick's office the day of Rutgers fest. And I was curious what responsibility the university assumed for the impact on the city that Rutgers fest had. And I basically got nothing.
That's been an ongoing problem with the New York City. I hope that that's going to change.
And if I may, that's exactly what I want to reinforce here. I'm looking for the partner that seems to sometimes be missing in a lot of the issues that siege our city, I guess they plague. And I'm an owner-occupier for 15 years, and I've seen a lot. And I think the university can help a great deal in a number of areas. With respect to dissemination of the information, I mean, emailing Rutgers students is a very simple solution. I've made suggestions there. With respect to just a welcome to New Brunswick email to the students saying, look, welcome to New Brunswick, but you live with other residents and they live here too. And please try and have some responsibility, Mr. Egan, and respect for the city. That, the university does give a lot to the city. There's no question about that. And clearly, the city gives a lot back. So it's definitely a symbiotic relationship. And it should be a win-win-win relationship between students, residents, and the university. And I think the university will come forward on a couple of issues. I'd like to just ask you the question.
Question, go to the chair.
Oh, sorry. There are some representatives that I might like to speak with from the communities. I heard some Democrats, right?
You have all the.
I just, I'm not going to get an option to put it out there afterward. And with the university, President McCormick was thinking of putting together a commission that brought together residents of the community that were not turnover transient renters. And I think that's a great idea. I don't know if he's on his way out or not. I think that's the case.
Yes, he's retired.
Right. But I think that's a great idea. We have representative body of students that interact with the city. I think it would be helpful for the university to seek the opinion and advice of the residents of the community in helping them come to terms with the issue. And that's all. A kumbaya.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody has spoken. We postpone this to the 21st, 8/7. So I'm going to end the discussion at this time. I want to thank you for all coming out, for all your comments, all your suggestions. For those of you that are interested, please stay interested so you can get any suggestions and comments to move this forward, whichever way. As Mr. Egan said, if there's any other better ideas out there, he's more than willing to listen to them and incorporate them if need be and if it's helpful. So that's what we're going to do. But before we do it, Mr. Hamilton suggests that we move the amendments, which is not voting on the ordinance itself. So on the amendments, I would need a motion. Make a motion, move the amendments.
I second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Assim? Aye. And I need a motion to adjourn it. And I need a motion to adjourn this since September 21st, which would be at 6:30. Any of our Jewish friends know if that's in conflict with the Jewish holiday in September?
I think it began the 24th. I'm not Jewish. I've looked at Halloween recently.
Okay. We'll go with this. You got a yes over here? Mr. Shapiro?
Actually, I'm checking now. I'll admit, I'm not the best Jew.
You're all we got tonight.
I was told I took the Jewish population already, but I don't know.
No, it's the 21st, so the 21st is the date. We got a motion and.
So moving on to the second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Assim?
Aye.
Can I say something real quick, just to clear? Because I don't want to hear September 21st. Who's going to be, I want to make sure that we are here, who's meeting with us. Because I don't want it to come, oh, the city council didn't meet with us, and what? And I don't think that's the.
We had the head of the Rutgers student who's going to give his name, address, either email or something to the clerk after the meeting. Okay? And. Mr. Patterson's got the lead, I guess, so he's a good person. No, I don't. No, no, no. So, I'm on that last second. Make sure you give your name to the clerk before you leave. And if you have a vice, chair, vice, whatever.
I just want to make sure that we're clear, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. So that's it. We have ordinances on the first reading. Oh, yes, there are one, one, zero, one, and ordinance amendment supplement, divided in ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, payment of equity assignment.
I make a motion, setting down, it's the date I don't know, August 17th, for public hearings. Second?
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Assim?
Aye.
Okay, there are one, one, zero, two, and ordinance amendment supplement, divided in ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, play of tang, traffic and parking, big block crosswalk, the justice drive. Can I ask the people who are leaving to not walk on the way out? Thank you.
I make a motion, setting down Wednesday, August 17, 10:30.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Racine?
Aye.
Oh, there's 081103, an ordinance to amend and revise the ordinance of the city of New Brunswick. Chapter 12.03 sidewalk construction repair maintenance.
I make a motion, send it down, August 17th. Whatever else I'm supposed to say?
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Racine?
Aye.
We have resolutions, R.081101, you are, there's 081135, number 3, number 32 have been pulled, and we're holding number 24. Anyone from the public wish to comment on any of these resolutions?
Make some motion, you need more resolutions?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye.
Do you have any correspondence?
Yes, we do, Mr. Council President. Item number 1, copy of letter from Birds and Services Group, for professional services rendered for rehabilitation of recreation park. Number 2, letter from ATC Associates regarding FCC collection wireless communication facility. Number 3, copy of letter from DOT announcing application for municipal aid, lightway, and safe streets transit program. Number 4, letter regarding the pre-cycle network, creation of local groups and forums to reuse or recycle items. Correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments with further action.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to comment, or excuse me, wait, any councilman wish to? Anyone from the public, Mr. Remden?
Yes, can you give us some idea of the ordinance you just passed on first reading? Replacing the ordinance that you adjourned indefinitely, that is regarding the sidewalk construction.
Yeah, Mr. Remden? Mr. Hamper, Mr. Chapman?
Excellently rewritten, it'll be published in the topic in the morning.
Thanks. Can I bring my sidewalk chalk in and mark up the city council? I honestly, well, it's a sidewalk, the chalk was going to bring it in today, but. You can't tell specifically how it's meant.
Mr. Chapman, Mr. Remden, and I was focusing on those pages, I could not do justice.
Okay, and I couldn't understand your amount of comments from you about the resolution that amended. Is that available tonight? Resolution that amended? It's in the package, so, it's in. I didn't, I mean, I was only here for an hour, waiting for the meeting to start, but I didn't look through it because it's, it doesn't have any, it has a title that's 07. I know you said it's basically a $25 version, you said. Men, yes, that's going to hold. Thank you.
Anybody else?
What is the extra $3,000 allocated to delaying construction for the sewage pumping facility in.
It was two months' worth of the private contractor maintaining and operating the system as it exists at the moment. The pump station, we should say.
So there would be two months hence another expense of that of a similar nature that happened?
I would, I didn't see the two months that were a subject of the resolution. Do you, does it bring this current?
June, July.
Okay.
Oh, I see, so, so August and September could be another.
At least, I'd be a little disappointed if we were still at the pump station under his control in September. Meaning I'm expecting it to be under our control sometime soon, the project is close to being completed.
No, it's, it's close to being completed even though you haven't yet got the permission from the State House Commission.
The construction on the project has continued as you, as we discussed over the, the many months of discussion about this, yes. We have not done the State House Commission yet.
I see.
We're trying to get on their agenda.
For September.
I don't know the answer.
As soon as they schedule.
Yeah.
We've been pushing for a beginning.
Yeah, the deadline for September is August, August 19th, I think.
Well, that's Mr. Chapman, you reach out to Mr. Remden.
August 19th, and I just kind of remember that.
Anybody else?
The request to use Land Park for making a growing block association, the date here is wrong. On the application, I applied for August 17th, and on the 24th was the rain date.
Okay.
Is this, what I do?
We'll make sure that conflicted.
Okay, thanks a lot, thanks.
That the date that the request was, 17, and the rain date was the 24th. On the agenda, it says the date is the 24th.
But the resolution says the 17th.
Okay, the resolution reads correctly.
But I don't, I don't see the rain date approval on the resolution.
So we can move to amend it with that in the way. So we need a motion to amend it, to add the rain date of the 24th.
So, second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye.
Could someone please give you the resolution number?
08. 081108.
You're set on the date of the 17th and the rain date of the 24th. Anyone else, Mr. Prattville?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the other two councilmembers that I haven't thanked yet for your comments. It was really refreshing to see Rutgers join the, join the party, if you will. And I think that this can really be a phenomenal opportunity for the city and the student community, as well as Rutgers, to work closer together. And I do think that the, obviously, the, you know, May to June garbage situation is just one of many unique issues that the city faces. And it'd be really great if we could bring that same approach to those other issues. I also wanted to just thank the council for a couple of things. I know tonight you passed legislation, it's going to help create the first light lane ever in the city of New Brunswick. And I know that's something that a lot of people in the neighborhoods tell me they want to see.
Going on for quite some time, too.
I know, it's refreshing to see that move ahead. And I also, it was great to see Councilman Egan and some of the other folks in the city government at the groundbreaking of the Wellness Plaza, I know. Probably the number one thing folks told us the city was missing was a pool. And I'll be very glad to see that, I'll be very glad to see the supermarket. I live across the street, so it's going to be super convenient for me. But I think we also need to make sure that it's convenient for other folks and that transportation, parking is affordable, and in many cases, free, I think. Also, that the monthly subscription rates to the health and the pool components are kept affordable. And I think there should be a sizable discount for students.
We have a 20 that we afford for most residents, so.
Thanks so much, have a great night.
Anybody else?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to. From my, and Harvey Street. I was curious as to if we could see the language of the amendment to the, to that ordinance.
Right.
Oh, you have.
It's in the package.
It's not in that. No, it's not. Okay, thank you, that was, that was.
If Mr. Remden doesn't want to share.
I'll rent you one.
Anybody else? See none?
Is the motion we adjourned?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Racine?
Aye.